Okay, it's 6:01. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item C, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, we'd like to add two adjustments. The first, to add to J1, presentation of JMG, Jobs for Main Graduates, and to J2, consideration of Facilities and Transportation Committee recommendation.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item D, approval of the minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 21st, 2023 School Board Meeting as presented.
I second that. Discussion. So I would just like to just take a moment, just to make sure that when we are approving the minutes, we are certain about everything in the minutes, including who was at the meeting. And because I think there has been some discrepancies, so I just want to make sure that our meeting minutes are actually accurate. All those in favor? Thank you. Item E, communications and correspondence.
Yeah, I'll pass around this evening a letter of resignation from sixth grade teacher Victoria Van Trump.
Thank you. Administrator Board reports. Do you want to start with Mr. Tracy?
Alright, so you see the sea of red in front of you, which represents our medalist tonight. Our students have done a phenomenal job preparing for Skills USA, the state competition. As you know, several will be headed off to the nationals, but just to give you a little bit of a rundown and then get the students up here to introduce themselves. The Skills USA Main Championship is the state-level competition for high school and college students enrolled in trade, technical, and skilled service instructional programs, including allied health occupations. Skills USA Main believes that this is a single greatest event of industry and education volunteerism in the state every year. Students spend many hours preparing for their competitions, in school, outside of school, during vacations, weekends, tons of time. Our instructors also spend extra time making themselves available to support our students and get them to the level where they're ready to compete. Our students ended up competing against 24 other CTE schools in the state of Maine. Due to their hard work and determination, they've accomplished something great, as you'll hear them talk about tonight. I do want to mention, we had a number of students compete, and I think those students should think about whether they medaled or not, it was a bear, right? This is not just a little undertaking. This is a year-long process of preparation and getting ready for this competition, so they should be proud of the work, even to choose to do this and take the time to be prepared. But that said, I'd like to now invite our students to come forward and introduce themselves. They're going to introduce themselves, say their sending school, their grade level, and what competition they competed in, and what place they took. So we'll start working around this way. Have you guys come up and share?
Don't all jump at once.
Somebody has to be first.
I'm Alexis Bradford. I'm from Ellsworth High School, grade 11, and I applied to be a state officer, and I'm currently a state officer.
I am Taylor Mason. I'm a senior at Ellsworth High School, and I competed in the Prepared Speech Competition and placed gold.
My name is Annabelle Hackett. I'm a senior at Ellsworth, and I competed in the Job Interview Competition, and I got silver.
Hi, I'm Navea Becker. I'm a sophomore at Ellsworth High School. I placed gold in extemporaneous speaking.
I'm Riley Door. I'm a junior at Doral Stonington High School, and I placed gold in Basic Healthcare Skills.
I am Emma Brzezowski, a senior at Bucksport High School. I did the Early Childhood Education Competition and placed gold.
I'm Olivia McCallion.
I'm Callie Chase.
I'm Isabel Catherine. I'm from Sumner. I'm a junior and...
I'm from Sumner, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm from Bucksport. I'm a senior, and we placed gold in the Career Pathways Humanity.
My name is Quentin Stone. I'm from Mount Desert Island. I'm a junior. I did Action Skills. I placed gold.
Hi, I'm Brooke Peary. I'm a junior at Ellsworth High School.
I'm Shaylan Carter, and I'm a junior at Ellsworth High School.
And we placed silver in Quiz Bowl.
I'm Oakley Bench. I'm a senior at MDI High School, and I placed gold in Restaurant Service.
I'm Joseph York. I am a junior at Ellsworth High School, and I placed gold in Law Enforcement Quiz Bowl.
Hi, I'm Tia Fontaine. I'm a senior at Ellsworth High School, and I placed gold in the Criminal Justice Quiz Bowl.
Hi, I'm Kobe Sweat. I am a sophomore at Ellsworth High School, and my team placed bronze in the Cake Decorating Competition.
My name's Gemily Williams. I go to Ellsworth High School. I competed in, to be first, a state officer, and I'm currently a state officer.
My name is Amelia Madigan. I am a sophomore at Ellsworth High School, and I applied to be a state officer, and I am now a state officer.
Hi, my name's Alicia Thurston. I'm a senior at MDI. I competed in the Health Knowledge Bowl, along with three other people, and we received silver.
As you can see, not all of our...
One more. I caught you, sorry.
My name is James Canare. I'm a senior at Bucksport High School, and I placed silver in Diesel Technology.
I would just like to have a round of applause for our students who couldn't make it here tonight. I do want to take a moment and turn it over to one of our amazing advisors. Our two advisors are Andrew Trowbridge and Megan Stubbs, and without them, we would not be where we are in these competitions. They set us up for success every single year, and this year was no different. So without their leadership, dedication, time, commitment, it just wouldn't happen. So Megan, if you'd like to come up?
I'm Megan Stubbs. I'm the early childhood teacher at HCTC and also one of the head advisors for our chapter. So not only do we recognize our students tonight, but we would also like to recognize our superintendent, Amy Bowles, who was awarded the Cornerstone Award during the opening ceremonies Thursday night. The Skills USA Cornerstone Award recognizes the cooperative relationship that has been established over the years between local school administrators and Skills USA chapters. The success of each chapter is reliant on the collective efforts of many dedicated school administrators who have unselfishly committed their professional and civic talents to support, in the support of our members. This year's nominee has consistently demonstrated their genuine commitment to the education of students and has worked tirelessly to support their students and their local Skills USA chapter. She encourages her staff to provide these life-changing experiences to their students by competing at Skills USA Main events, and in many instances, their students have, or our students have medaled, and moved on to the Skills USA National Competition. She works day and night to help advisors and students fundraise to ensure that students have financial support to attend national competitions without it being a financial burden to those students. She is a true cheerleader and supporter of her students and staff. She makes sure that the sending school administrators and staff are aware of their students who are participating and encourages them to attend these events as well, so that they can witness the magic and success that Skills USA Main brings to all students. To be eligible for this award, letters of recommendation needed to be submitted to the State of Maine Director and the Board of Directors. Four letters of recommendation were written, one from the chapter advisor, one from a staff member, one from a parent, and then most importantly, one from a current student that is part of the Skills USA Main organization. I now would like to call Taylor Mason forward to read her letter of recommendation, because it truly speaks to the dedication and impact Superintendent Bowles has on the students that she works with.
So can I just, like, not look?
We have tissues?
They're way down there, Paul.
Yep, pass those down.
Don't look at me, Ted.
I am a current student at Hancock County Technical Center, finishing my second year in the Hospitality, Travel, and Tourism Program. When I look back on my time at HCTC, there are certain people that come to mind. Instantly, Mrs. Bowles is one of those people. As the director of our school, she was always available to help me through the difficult situations. More importantly, through the times that, there are times that she was there to be my biggest support system throughout HCTC. I entered the Skills USA competition last year, very much out of my comfort zone. Mrs. Bowles was always there with a smiling and encouraging word. Prepared speech is not an easy competition for a student who spends most of her time in high school life in the shadows. Her trust in me that I could do it was a big factor for my success in the competition. Mrs. Bowles was there the day I competed, walking around and touching base with the students. Just seeing her and knowing she was there was all the support I needed to step into that room and do my best. The night that HCTC hosted our awards night for Skills USA Main Competition in 2022, I was nervous. I put myself out there to do something very much out of my comfort zone, and that was something to be proud of. But hearing my name, not just as a medalist, but as a winner of gold, was a feeling very hard to put into words. As I made my way to the front of the room, Mrs. Bowles instantly wrapped her arms around me and whispered, "You did it." She was celebrating my success with me, just as it was happening. I don't even think she realizes how much that moment meant to me at the time. It is something I had never felt from my high school. I dedicated to continue my membership in Skills USA by becoming a state officer and giving my all to the organization. I am lucky to have Mrs. Bowles as a leadership figure to show me how to open myself up, how to be the student completely committed, and how to be a strong student leader. Mrs. Bowles is everything an administrator should be, and more. She is very deserving of the Cornerstone Award.
So we want to again thank you, Mrs. Bowles, for always giving us your all and more. So your tireless dedication and support for students is unmatched and beyond appreciated, even though we don't get to tell you that enough. So please know that we truly, truly appreciate you. Again, we thank the board for allowing us to present these awesome students and speak to Mrs. Bowles' dedication to all of our students. Great job, students, and here's some more years of success to come.
So you do have my board report. If there's any other questions you have about things... Not sure we want to follow up with anything else.
Well done.
Amazing.
Yeah. All of you.
The best school board meetings are when we have students here, and tonight's meeting with these students has been, like, over the top, exceptional and wonderful. Thank you all for coming, and congratulations on all your success. And I know you'll continue to do well in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
Oh, I know they want to, though.
You don't have to stay.
No. Go on, you can leave.
And then Mr. Clifford has to go too.
Thank you so many of you who traveled so far to be here tonight, too. Thank you. Yeah. It means a lot. Congratulations.
Good job. You don't want to stay for the whole meeting.
She's like, absolutely not.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
I know, it is, isn't it? I'll get back at some point.
Sorry.
Don't hurt stuff.
Hey, Kobe.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you so much. Thank you, and great job with your students.
Alright, Mr. Clifford, you get to follow that.
I think he brought friends, too.
Well, I brought kids, too. You have my board report, and I will go over that after. I wanted to introduce you to the One Act Play students. I know many of you have seen it multiple times. I've seen it three times, and it's an incredible, incredible performance, and they're getting ready to go to the New England Festival. And so I'd like for them to come up, along with Ms. Ireland, and introduce themselves, what year you are, and your role in the One Act.
Hi, I'm Pine Hanson. I play Joseph in the Jaco Ben. I'm a junior.
I'm Riley Weskit. I'm a junior, and I am in charge of all...
All the staff.
Making sure that everyone gets the right clothes on their bodies when they need to, and I am also the understudy for the cat.
I am Audrey Gould, and I play Marie Antoinette, and I am a junior.
I am Finley Harmon. I'm a freshman, and I am part of the tech crew.
I'm Marshall Woods. I am a sophomore. I work on set and stage crew. I am also understudy for Person.
I'm Leigh Ford. I am a sophomore, and I stage manage for the One Act.
Thank you for having us tonight. I just wanted to mention a few quick things about their accomplishments, because they would obviously not tell you themselves. You wouldn't know they were theater kids when they were standing up here. They did win first place at their regional. There is a regional and state level of the Drama Festival. They won their regional at MDI. They were given a special judge's commendation for an outstanding technical crew. If you don't know, the set for the One Act Play has to go up in five minutes and come down in five minutes. So you start with a blank stage, and this team of students builds this whole world in five minutes. It really is something to behold. They aren't all with us tonight. There were, some of them are on their way to Spain. Some of them are at an honors banquet, so these kids do a lot. All Festival Cast, which is basically the all-star team of actors, if you're more of an athletic person, were awarded to Felix Marcosian, Pine Hanson, and Audrey Gould. We went on to perform for the student body, something we haven't been able to do in several years. That was exciting. Let everyone see what they worked so hard on for months and months and months. We hosted states. I want to give a shout out to our VPA boosters who helped us make it happen, and it's a really great event for the community and for students from all over the state. They did place third. We can talk about that some other time. It was a very, very close set of scores. So on top of, you know, participating, we had students hosting other students, and we had the most wonderful feedback about the experiences from the other directors and teachers and chaperones and students. They literally asked to come back to Ellsworth, so that's a very nice feeling. Judge's commendation at the state level was Leigh Ford for outstanding stage management. Once the show starts, the adults are hands-off. We can't have anything to do with it. So they are on their own. All Festival Cast at the state level was Audrey Gould, Savannah Hasham, Lindsay Sarad, and Pine Hanson. We are going to be one of the main representatives at the New England Drama Festival. The other two schools that placed did not accept that invitation, and I have to say, we are so thankful. I was so glad to be asked tonight to get to thank you. Not all schools have the support and the permission to go, and it really means a lot to these kids who have not gotten to do things normally for a while. So we are headed to Camden Hills High School in Rockport, April 20th to the 22nd, and it truly is a festival setting. I am already training the students. Rather than judge feedback, the students learn to participate in discussion forums. So there's a whole set of training about how we talk to other artists and how we give feedback. So they will participate in that. There are workshops in clowning and stage combat and all kinds of wonderful things. So it really is an educational experience, not a competition. So it's such an honor to get to go to New England's, because it's unique to anything else we do. I think that's all I need to say. They're much more interesting, so if you have any questions for them, please feel free. I will get out of the way.
I just want to say, I had the opportunity to go watch this when they performed in front of the whole school, and I was completely blown away by you all and what you did. They are so impressive with start to finish. It was amazing. The set, the lights, the costumes, the changes, the changes. Yeah, it was phenomenal.
That's why she made that noise, right?
Yes. Yes, it was wonderful. So congratulations to you all.
Thank you. Those two students who are in Spain, if you noticed, our technical crew is stepping in to learn their roles in case something should happen.
In case they don't make it back.
They're going to be safe to get back. They're going to be sure of us. So it's exciting to see them take that next step, though, in that they all work together. We step in when we...
And can I ask, for those who in the audience, both here and watching remotely, who don't know the answer to this question, what's the title of the play and who wrote it?
I don't think anyone else can answer that one.
I usually look it up.
Or you could just say what it's about.
It is about the life of Marie Antoinette, and it is written by a former student, Georgia Zilgen. This is an original piece of work. It has never been done before. So it was written in collaboration with the students. These roles were custom-written for them as people, and as we worked on this piece together, they had input. There are things that now appear in this script that were their ideas, right? The cat came from you guys, the bell, things like that. There are things in the script that are student-generated, so to work on a devised piece of theater is very different than just getting, you know, this script that we've seen a lot of times. It's very risky, and it is a modern take on her life. So rather than the nasty pamphlets they wrote about Marie Antoinette, you see tweets in the background, and it's all music that has a, is classically based, but is, what, dubstep? Dubstep, dubstep, house music, like, so it's this really interesting sort of retelling of a story that we think we know.
Yeah, it really made you rethink everything you thought you knew about Marie Antoinette.
I can possibly say the title. Maria Marie Antonia Antoinette, Joseph Joseph Jean Jean. Cancel Culture, Cancel Culture's Queen.
Well, I know New England's is not a competition like the other ones, where it's a festival and it's a chance to just see what other schools are doing from around New England and to have them see what you're doing. So congratulations for going there, and I think it's great that you kids will get to have that showcase and that Georgia will be able to have that showcase for her work.
I didn't realize that she did that.
Amazing.
Awesome.
You guys, we could not be more proud. And we have, I mean, the amount of talent our students tonight show, it just, I can't, I'm so excited. Like, this is Ellsworth's future. This is the future of our theater. You guys blow us away. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you didn't bring students as part of your board report, you should probably just not.
And as always, if you want to stay, you're welcome to.
You don't have to leave.
So the, every spring, it's the year of, or the time of year for the MPA Principals Award, and that is given to a senior with high academics, leadership, and citizenship. And this year, recipient was Elizabeth Ford. She has 102.125 grade point average leadership. She is tied to every single club that we have in our community that we've ever had throughout her four years. She's an incredible person and very deserving. We, she and I went to a luncheon a couple weeks ago, and they draw 10 $1,000 scholarships, which she did not win, but we had a good meal, and it was good to spend some time together. She's going to go to Brandeis next year, and I'm very much looking forward to that. We had our Student of the Month Assembly two weeks ago. Last week, we had our EHS Music Night, which was terrific to have, because we haven't been able to the last couple of years. And so that was jazz bands, both of them, and show choir performed, and it was very, very well-attended, and it's the last time that they'll be in person this year. So it was good to have that. Trip to Spain, so students left today and teachers left today, this morning at 7:00, and got on the bus and headed to Boston to catch their flight to Spain. And they're going to be gone for over a week, and I know that they'll have a great time. I know they're bringing cool clothes, because it's in the 90s there right now, and it has been for a while. They kind of have a heat wave going over there.
They could bring it back if they wanted to.
Yeah, so they're looking forward to some nice weather. And she may hit on this, but Mrs. Woodward, she put together a job fair for us, and it was last week, and very well-attended by area businesses, around 30 of them. Very well-organized. I know the students left the gymnasium area, very happy, and so did the businesses, because they got a list of prospective students that may work for them this summer. But she put a ton of work in that, along with her JMG classes, and it was terrific. We did one pre-COVID, but it wasn't to the extent that, of the detail that this was, and it was incredible, and some of you were there also. And she may, maybe she's going to touch on that in her report, I'm not sure, but I just wanted to point that out. It was really good and well-attended, and it's something that we look to do, you know, every spring.
Any of you have any questions on anything?
Well, as someone who attended the job fair with, along with a colleague to try to recruit some summer employees, I have to say, and I had been to the one pre-COVID as well, and I was really impressed at how much more, how many more businesses and organizations were at this one. And just the whole vibe in the room was just so positive, and there were great displays by these businesses and organizations, and the kids seemed really engaged. We had, you know, terrific conversations with kids, and I got to check in with some of the other businesses and organizations that were there, and they were all just really impressed with it. And so thank you for doing that, and I'll thank Katie. I already thanked Katie, but yeah.
Yeah, it was good.
It was good, and we got, we got, if all of the qualified candidates that we talked to want to work for us, we'll have way too many to use, so hopefully some of them can find positions elsewhere. But no, it's, it was good. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. I think the first one we had a few years ago, there may have been 15, maybe 16 businesses, and like I said, it took up like half the gym. This year is a full gym, and there are over 30. So it was a great day. It was, and it went really well.
It's great.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Clifford.
Good evening. You have my report. I'm April Clifford. I'm the principal at the Ellsworth Elementary Middle School. I don't have students, but I get to talk about Dare Graduation. So on April 5th, we had Officer Merchant, who is our school resource officer, spent 12 weeks with students and did a 12-week program on Dare. And all of the Ellsworth Police Department was there to celebrate students as they walked into the building. They formed a little, I want to say, tunnel, and students got to walk through there as they were seated to receive their certificates for the program. It was just really nice to bring back. We keep talking about bringing back and getting back to "normal" for quote, but it was a really great experience for all of our students. Students were thrilled to participate in the program. We had to do a lot of, a little bit of a schedule changes and stuff, and everyone was happy to accommodate that program, and it was just a great celebration. We had it during the day. It was at 9:00 AM, and it was well-attended by parents. I was really surprised, but it was well-attended. We had more chairs, and we had a concert set up, and it was just really nice to have that celebration with us. that celebration with our community, with our police officers being there, and Officer Merchant's just done a great job in connecting with students at school. So that's just one of the highlights that we had for the month of April. We also had over two hundred and thirty kids, I think is what the last count was. We had a fingerprinting event. We sent home permission for K-four students, and they saw over two hundred and thirty students. We had to extend it a day because we weren't able to get through all the students who returned their permission forms the first day. The HCTC law enforcement students participated with our students, and they were, each student was fingerprinted, and they were sent home with a fingerprint card. So it was a great collaboration. I want to thank Bill and Alan Smith, as well as Scott, who really spearheaded that project to make that work. Teachers have just sent out a recent update for K-four students. I call it like a teacher's update or a teacher's progress report. It really just focused on some foundational skills, and they wanted to provide an update on how students were doing in the classroom. That went home on the fourth and the fifth. At any time, if you have any questions about that or want to meet with a teacher at any time, you're welcome to make an appointment and do that at any time. But that communication was sent home. It was really crafted by each grade level, so it was unique to the grade level and the skills that students are learning, which is something a little bit different than we've done in the past. Also, we celebrated students this month with the Most Improved Student Collaboration with the Sea Dogs. So the Sea Dogs host a game on May twenty eighth, and each homeroom teacher got to nominate one student, and we sent those names to the Sea Dogs, and they provided a free ticket as well as certificate for students to celebrate, and those were sent home at about two and a half weeks ago. But we celebrated one student per homeroom, K-eight, throughout the building. So it's a nice little surprise for them, and students were appreciated, and it was an improvement award, so it was recognizing students who showed growth, which I think is something that we need to do more often, but I think it was an opportunity for that. College Circle, done by Bob Stewart. This is another thing that we're kind of bringing back. This is the college scholarship where students have to write an essay, and this year, students had to interview as well and get a teacher recommendation. We had several students submit that. We had thirty-eight students participate. We have several that have gotten scholarships. I have the list, but I have not sent it out to parents yet, so I'll be doing that hopefully later tonight or early in the morning, and we'll be announcing those. But we had a really good showing. Some of the things that we were able to do with students, they were able to participate in that. We also celebrated students who decided to participate because it's something you have to do beyond the classroom. Teachers introduce it. Mr. Stewart comes and talks about choices for students. Some are military, some are trade schools, some are colleges, and they talk through this program. But you have to do some of the work at home, like you have to go out to a teacher and get a recommendation, you have to do an interview. So Mrs. Stackpole was really instrumental in bringing this back and took a large leadership role, but we took all students to Helen's Restaurant and had, and had pie to celebrate, which was absolutely fabulous. I know. I want to thank Melanie because she's also a great supporter of our schools and to allow us to do that. I mean, we arrived right at, you know, right before lunch started. She segued it an area off. They were waited on. Kids got to order soda, but not caffeinated. But they really felt, it was a really big deal for them because they were all their friends, and they were doing that together. So we celebrated all students who did that. In addition, last week, the noontime rotary were, were the group that judged the essays, and they wanted to meet all the kids that wrote them. So they met in the library during noontime rodeo, rodeo, rotary last week, excuse me, and the rotarians sat at each table and mingled with students and had like a little list, like a little cheat sheet, oh, you wanted to be a ballerina, or you wrote about being a policeman, and so they were able to interact with students, and it was really well-attended. So we're going to celebrate the scholarship winners once they get announced, and that'll be the next phase. We have, we're hoping to increase that opportunity for kids because it's a really great. And a bonus, some of the students that didn't qualify for the scholarships had incomplete applications, and Mrs. Stackpole has offered to help those students if they wanted to resubmit, and there's still enough time to do that, so students might have a second chance to be able to get that. So that's something that's also exciting. Spring sports are well underway at EMS. Track is well underway, as well as softball and baseball, and the spring play is coming along. It's a shorter version, and Jay White has stepped up to do that, and Jasmine Ireland and some of her seniors came down today to support that. So it's just really a wonderful collaboration. And that's about it. Concert season's coming, parents. Be ready. Any questions for me?
She may not have brought students, but I do have pictures. It was, I thought it was really incredible, and it was really, really awesome to see all the police cruisers lined up in the circle.
Yeah, we had to put a post out because people were worried. There's nothing wrong.
When you know what's happening, you're walking up, it just was really neat to see all of those cruisers parked out there, and like, for kids to be able to start developing relationships with law enforcement that are positive, so that they know that there's someone they can go to if there's a situation or, God forbid, something happened, that there's someone that they already trust. And I know that my fifth grader absolutely loved the program with Sean because he said they weren't allowed to call him Officer Merchant. It was Sean during, during Dare, and they, it, it was really, really a great, great program, and the kids were so excited, and they got cupcakes.
They did. Having an SRO has really made a positive impact, especially at the elementary middle school. I just, I just think that he's worked really hard to build relationships with students. He's out at the crosswalk, he's out in the morning, he checks in every morning with us, and it's just been a nice, a nice aspect to our school that we hadn't had before. So we definitely appreciate the support of the city and Chief Mosher with that.
And a special shout out to Sean because I, I bring my kids to school every morning, and I see that interaction, and they all like to see him. They, the fist bumps and the good morning and the conversation and the joking, like, he really connects really well with the students, and you can definitely tell that even just in the crosswalk.
That's great. All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, Annie?
Nope.
Yep. All right. Mrs. Vols, you're up.
Just a few things tonight because the bulk of the work this last month, because we met a week later last month, is about budget and of course, all the committee work, which we'll talk about shortly. The first thing that I did want to talk about is a project that we have had staff working on that I think is important for the board and the public to hear about called Two STEM Workforce Ready 2030. There are seven districts statewide participating in this. AOS ninety-one, MDI, SAD forty-four, Bethel, Dexter Ridgeview, Turner, Rumford, Lincoln, Rangeley, and Ellsworth are participating in this. And we have a group of educators from all the schools that are participating in this. So I want to thank Katie Hollenback, Jane Stackpole, Jen Trowbridge, Leanna Connors, Sarah Morris, Laura Johns, Melanie Brown, Holly Libby for being the teachers that are participating in this. And part of this Workforce Ready opportunity includes participation from a leadership team member on the STEM Workforce Ready Committee, and Frank Rapp, our new technology director, has taken on that role. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the goals of the project. As we start strategic planning next year for our school department, I think something that really has to be talked about is if our community believes in STEM and computer science and how we want to integrate that into our school system. And so there's three goals of this project, mainly to further develop and pilot computational thinking integrated math lessons, so that students are introduced to computational thinking earlier and to computer science earlier. So these teachers participated this summer in professional development, and that's ongoing throughout this year for them, and then they bring information back to the rest of the staff. With the Mobile Computer Science Grant we got this fall, that was actually a nice tie-in with this work, with all the new kits and devices we got this fall. So I wanted to make sure the board was aware that we had been working on that. Secondly, as we've talked about, some of the goals that we've worked on is community collaboration and bringing our schools back to the communities and our community back into the schools. So just to outline a few things, which I've tried to do each month, I want to thank our Director of Facilities, Frank Emmonson, who has worked really hard on developing a capital improvement plan, a five-year plan for our school department, and he and I attended the City Council Capital Plan Meeting last week and felt like we had a really good discussion. One of the things that I thought was really good was that we were able to hear what other departments need in the city as well, so that there's a better understanding and communication between all of us. So I want to thank him for attending that with me. Also, on Friday, myself and our district's accounting manager, Amy Atherton, went to the City Council Finance Committee meeting as we continued to try to build transparency between the council and the board and the school department regarding finances and our budget. So that happened. I was also able to attend a few of the different things that were talked about. The one-act play, as I said, was phenomenal. I too was able to go to Dare and want to also thank Chief Mosher and the Police Department. I got there, and they were lined up in the tunnel for this, the kids were walking through, and that was pretty cool. And I want to echo what Mrs. Clifford said. It was unbelievable to me at nine AM on a workday to see the number of families in attendance, which again, I think shows how much people want to be back and involved in our schools, which was really exciting for me. Also, that same day, went to the career fair that was mentioned earlier and was totally blown away by that. Very happy. The Chamber of Commerce was very excited because they, of course, helped partner with us on working on that, and they were thrilled with the turnout in terms of student engagement in going around and talking to the businesses. And a lot of businesses commented on how happy they were that they were back in the school, how wonderful it was to talk to kids. And I loved seeing a lot of alumni, which makes me feel old, but a lot of alumni were businesses and at the table talking to students that I had when I was at the high school as assistant principal. So that was pretty cool, too, so that kids can see, kids can come back and have a wonderful life here. I think that's really important, too. So I thought that was a really positive aspect of that event, so I was thrilled about that. Finally, I want to also thank Melanie Fox, who once again showed her generosity, as Mrs. Clifford said, in having the students. I was able to go over and visit with the kids while they had pie, and I might have partaken in the pie as well. And one of the cool things that the kids talked about that I wanted Mr. Tracy to hear was a lot of them spoke about how their essays were tied to their middle school camp experience, that they had written this essay about this career, and oh, this past weekend, I did that at that school of yours, some of them said, and they talked about what they did at our middle school camp at HCTC. And so I thought, how cool is that, that kids are writing essays about their college aspirations and then were able to put it into practice at HCTC? So those are just a few of the different community things that have been going on that I thought were important for the board to know. The rest of the work will come with the agenda items.
Thank you.
And I would like to add, I had a student, a child, one of my kids attended the HCTC camp, and pulling into the parking lot, I was blown away by the number of people who participated, how large the line was of people waiting to get signed in, and I heard nothing but rave reviews from my child when he came home. So I thought that was really an incredible experience, and I know you haven't been at this very long, so like, I'm sure there were many hands to put that together, but it was really, it was really cool to see how much interest there was with, with.
Hundred kids?
Hundred kids from twenty different sending schools.
Hundredth middle schoolers from twenty sending schools.
Six through eight or fifth through eight?
Six through eight.
Yeah, so that's just six through eight.
On a Saturday?
Yeah.
On a Saturday.
And nine o'clock in the morning.
Well, and, and again, and I've said this before, and I want to say it again, the HCTC staff, to give up their Saturday to do that for free so that kids could have that opportunity, is pretty, pretty amazing as well.
Yeah, and there was, there was a significant staff showing as well. That was really amazing.
Yes.
Well done. Great. Thank you. All right, Item G, Committee Reports. I believe that the Policy Committee and the Finance Committee would be covered later on in the agenda. Mr. Markosian, would you touch upon personnel?
Personnel, yeah. We've completed our collective bargaining process with the teachers. So now the teachers, we, it hasn't been ratified yet, but that's the next step that'll be ratified, for it to be ratified by the Teachers Association, and then finally by our board, hopefully at our next board meeting. That's the, that's the hope.
That is the hope. Thank you.
So I wanted to just say thanks again to the teachers who are on the Bargaining Committee. The whole process was very positive from beginning to end.
Yep. For sure. Thank you. Beth, would you like to touch upon facilities and transportation?
We don't have too much going on right at the moment. We, yeah, just lost that. We are still getting quotes in for some new windows at the high school. It's also exciting. The flooring we approved in the library, we spoke, I spoke about that last time, and then we voted on that, so that's definitely a go, and getting a new heat pump in the library. I think that's kind of all we have going on at the moment.
Thank you. Abby, I know, yes, we're policies coming up.
It's all in there.
Beth, will you touch upon curriculum, please?
Yes, so we had the opportunity to meet with two of the high school math teachers at our Curriculum Committee Meeting, just kind of talking about how the curriculum at the K-eight level flows into the curriculum at the nine-twelve level. We had an opportunity to talk about what some of their needs are in regards to resources and to just kind of chat about what it is that they're using for their curriculum so that we can work towards a cohesive flow. You know, we do have people who come to our high school from other schools, so keeping that in mind, just really making it, making it as, as straightforward as possible for our instructors and giving them the tools that they need to be able to teach our kids and at all the different levels. So that was a really great conversation. We also are going to be, so our next meeting, we're looking at writing. We had talked that we were going to.
Writing or science.
Writing or science, yep. So our, our plan is to kind of go through each of the curriculum categories and to just see, you know, what's working, what isn't, so that we can provide the best experience for our students, so.
Thank you very much. Next up is Item H, Public Participation, and I would just like to remind folks of our public participation policy. And in that policy, speakers are not permitted to share gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. All speakers are to address the chair and direct questions or comments to particular school board members or their superintendent only with approval of the chair. Members of the school board and the superintendent may ask questions of any person who addresses the board, but they must first ask the chair. And there can be no complaints or allegations concerning any specific person employed by the school system. And we will give each person three minutes if they would like.
Hello.
Hi. Mr. Markosian, will you be the timekeeper, please? You're very good at that.
And if you could state your name for us, that would be amazing as well.
Yep. I'm Nate Hanson. I'm a parent of one high school student, one of whom we just saw up here, and another graduate. And in light of what we've heard from other schools and towns in our area in the last couple months and some decisions to remove certain books and remove flags from their respective schools, it just has me thinking about, you know, what's going on and what the thought process is and the effects of those decisions. And, and makes me think, of course, about how those things play out so far and how they could play out in the future in our own schools. I really think that the, I believe that the intent of those school boards and of the parents and community members who have been involved in making these decisions and advocating these decisions to remove books, certain books and to remove flags, I believe that their intent is not to undermine the sense of community in those schools and is not to separate or, you know, undermine the. and is not to separate or, you know, undermine the sense of support that all kids feel in those schools. I think everyone wants to create that and support that sense of, of community. Unfortunately, the effect of those decisions does not match the intent. The effect of those decisions is absolutely felt by certain members of those communities and by certain students in those schools as being really direct attacks on them. Even though that's not the intent, that's the effect. And I think that it's really important that when arguments are brought to these boards and when we hear about them ourselves, just as community members, that we really center ourselves on thinking about how these discussions are heard by our kids, by other people in our community. One of the things that's really important to all of us, it's really important to me in living in Ellsworth, is that it is a place that has all sorts of different families, different backgrounds. There's a bunch of different kids who think all sorts of different things about their world, about themselves, about each other, and that's really an asset. And we need to do everything we can to allow space for everyone to be who they are, explore who they are, especially as they're growing up, and be supported. I know that our school staff and teachers put a huge amount of thought and effort into ways to make all these different kids feel supported. And I hope that we continue here in Ellsworth in the way that you, as school board, have a history in the past of making votes to explicitly support symbols of inclusivity, like the Rainbow Crosswalk that just simply tells everyone, you're welcome no matter who you are and how you are. I hope that we continue that.
Ten seconds.
I hope we really continue that positive message and continue appreciating and building that community of support for everyone. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I just wanted to say, sitting here tonight, how grateful I am. I am always grateful, but-
Your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Casey Hanson, Ellsworth resident. I have one kid in high school and one kid who is away at college. And just really grateful that my kids have, are coming through the Ellsworth school system. Just see my child, who is Ben, who was here this, this evening, being supported by our amazing drama department, our amazing music department, and then even elementary and middle school, their scholarship program. My third grade niece interviewed my daughter who's in college to write her scholarship thing. That's just an amazing community for my kids to be a part of. And then I just wanted to say, I, I am also really thankful for you all and for the teachers, especially over an extremely challenging last three years, five years, whatever. It's been such an intense time for all communities, and our community is no different. And I, and I, you guys have had to deal with just a lot of really intense emotions and really strong feelings about how decisions ought to get made. And I just think, for example, with COVID decisions, you really made reasonable, non-extreme decisions that kept our community safe, that kept our kids in school as much as they could. And I know that that's really hard, and I just really appreciate it. And you're, and I know that you're in the middle of your budget season and negotiating with the teachers and the Capitol. Presentation was incredible, just incredibly thorough and detailed and forward-thinking, and I appreciate that greatly, so just really thankful for you guys tonight.
Well, thank you.
Hi, my name is Barbara Byer. I'm an Ellsworth resident. I have two sons who went through the elementary school and part of the middle school. And I am, I work as an ed tech in the elementary school. And I'm just here, in light of there have been so many controversies around the nation and nearby about books and things in school, I wanted to give a shout out to all of our school librarians who do such an amazing job of trying to cultivate that love of reading in all of these kids and finding books for them that not only have, you know, represent them, but also show them other points of view and other cultures. And I know my children both love their time in the library. And I just want to say how important and wonderful those people are and how great and professional they are. And they are thinking about what books that they are getting for your children, and they are just all amazing people who are there to help your children read. That's their agenda. And that is all I wanted to say tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Then we will move on to item I, new business. Presentation of jobs for Maine graduates.
Good evening. I wanted to thank you for this opportunity to speak today a little bit about our program. I did bring students.
Yay! It's a theme.
Yes. So my name is Katie Woodward, and it's been a while since JMG has been up here to talk a little bit about what we do. So I just kind of wanted to explain a little bit more about our program and who we are. So Jobs for Maine Graduates is a nonprofit organization that publics with, sorry, that publics, that partners with private education, with public education and private businesses to ensure all Maine students can obtain post-secondary credentials, pursue meaningful careers, and be able to be successful in life. So we currently are in 93 high schools across the state of Maine, 27 middle schools, seven technical education programs, and 10 college campuses across the state. So at Ellsworth, our JMG program started four years ago. We started with 36 students. This year, we have 48 students, and we've been able to have many guest speakers in our school, some of them including Hussin College, Eastern Maine Community, Eastern Maine Community College. We've also had Linehan's Right Way Auto here in Ellsworth to talk about buying cars and the process that you go through. We also have taken a group of students as well to Hughes &amp; Company in Blue Hill, which is a cabinetry company, to learn a little bit more about opportunities in carpentry. And I also helped to plan and organize the career fair that was mentioned earlier as well. And so as part of that as well, we had a little mini lesson in advisory, training all of our students before the job fair on how to talk to employers and also the, the right way to ask questions and also how to have cover letter, or resumes and cover letters as well. So I actually am going to turn the time over to Tia to talk a little bit about JMG and what we learn on a daily basis. Tia?
Good evening. My name is Tia Fontaine, and I'm currently a senior here at Ellsworth High School. After I graduate in June, I plan to attend Eastern Maine Community College Fall Semester to pursue my career in Maine Wildlife and Fisheries Conservation Law. Tonight, I'm going to be sharing about my experience in the two years of being a JMG student. I've learned how to come out of my comfort zone. I've learned how to share my thoughts and opinions with my classmates. I've learned more into the adult life, such as the sign day college and my program of study. In this class, students will have the opportunity to learn about critical skills in leadership, teamwork, work habits, communication, and career development. This class is an amazing help preparing students for the future and has helped me prepare for the curves that life will throw at you. Ms. Woodward shows her greatness every day by being a wonderful teacher. She helps all of her students succeed, even with their not-so-strong points. She's helped me overcome my anxiety of public speaking and has had me be confident enough to speak in front of any crowd like I'm doing tonight. Ms. Woodward, your passion for teaching and helping your students is astonishing. Thank you to all the school board committee for the opportunity to share my wonderful experiences throughout my time in JMG. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tia. One of the main things in JMG that I like to teach our students is that everyone struggles and we all have weaknesses, but we can turn them into strengths. And that's part of what we do in JMG, is learn what our strengths are and how to be successful in the future. One of the opportunities that we have in JMG is called the Maine Career Exploration Badge. And this is a kind of two-part program. The first part is an online classroom. So students get to learn about career exploration, and then they get a 40-hour work experience. And it can be in a career that they really want to do and a meaningful experience, something that helps them out. So to kind of explain a little bit more about that, and is Kaia, who is participating in our Maine Career Exploration Badge this year.
Hi. Hi, my name is Kaia Gray, and I'm a senior here at Ellsworth. I plan to attend Plymouth State University in Plymouth, New Hampshire this coming fall to study occupational therapy. Today, I'll be talking a little bit about my experience in the Maine Career Exploration Badge and my work experience itself. I'm doing my work experience at two places. I started off as, with the athletic trainer during the fall semester earlier this year, and I'm finishing my hours with the occupational therapist at the elementary school. Participating in the Maine Career Exploration Badge, I've learned many things. Activities we're doing in JMG often correlate with what the online badge program is going over. In my time with the athletic trainer, I turned, I learned common ways to stretch athletes, how to tape ankles, and watched many initial injury evaluations. I've just started my time with the occupational therapist, and I've already learned so much. The occupational therapist at the elementary school works on simple tasks like ADLs, which stands for Activities of Daily Living, such as how to zip a jacket, to how to pick appropriate clothing to wear outside depending on the weather, but also works on fine motor skills like proper pencil grip and how to use scissors. She works with children in majority of grades K through two and sometimes three on modifying daily activities to make learning, to make learning and growing easier for them. Going into my work experience, I wasn't really sure what I wanted to do. I knew I really wanted to work with kids, but I, but I was also really interested in sports and the medical field. My work experience has helped me pick a career path that I'm interested in and now have a path to start off in college. Thank you for your time.
Nice job, Kaia. Thank you. So our program has grown quite a lot in the past four years, or, yeah, in the past four years, and we're going to continue to grow as well. So we have five JMG classes this year. We're looking to have six next year with the change in schedule. And we are always continuing to grow and to increase our program. So we thank you very much for this opportunity and to be able to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item two, discussion and consideration of Facilities and Transportation Committee's recommendation.
So yes, so over the last year, we've talked a little bit about, thank you, you guys.
Thank you, great job.
We have talked about the need for a new phone system. Bye, thank you very much. We had actually talked about a new system this fall, and you had voted on a new system this fall, that we then learned was going out of production. So we come to you tonight with a different recommendation. What is really wonderful about this quote and this product specifically is we can have all five schools and sites, or sites, I should say, can all be interconnected. So I can call Mr. Clifford at the high school or Mrs. Clifford at EEMS and not have to dial an outside line. We can all be interconnected. If central office switches locations at some point, which we've been talking about, the phones and the system can move. It's not necessarily site-based, so we were thoughtful about that. And right now, our system at EEMS still says that we're closed to the public, which is extremely frustrating for all of us because we are not closed to the public. But if we were to reprogram things, we run the risk of, of shutting stuff down. So we've had to leave that. So this new phone system would actually be paid for through Essar Funding because this is directly tied to communication systems related to COVID. So we would ask your blessing tonight. The Facilities Committee reviewed, we had four different quotes, four different systems that we looked at through three different companies, and the IT department looked at all of them. Facilities reviewed it at our last meeting, and we're looking for the full board to vote on this tonight.
Great. And one piece that was really important about this is that this particular one that we're voting on tonight, there are, there's not a licensing piece where we have to like buy a license for the tune of like $30,000 in a couple of years, which when you look, it's something I never even said until I came on this committee. But yeah, you, you know, most of the other ones were carrying these, all these really big price tags that would hit us further down the line. This one does not so nicely.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the Sierra Communications Phone Bid for a Grandstream Telephone System as recommended by the Facilities and Transportation Committee.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Is there any timetable as to how long it will take for this to switch over to happen?
They will do this this summer.
Okay.
The one clunky part will be like, for example, in central office, I will probably have two phones on my desk for a little bit, and then they'll have to shut down to transfer over. So, but it can be done this summer.
Excellent.
It's great.
And I was just informed from my kids today, there's only 40 days until summer vacation.
Oh, I can't. I just can't.
I think I just heard angels sing.
All those in favor?
Thank you. Thank you.
Number three, discussion and consideration of overnight out-of-state trip.
All right, my name is Bill Tracy. I'm the director at HCTC. So what we have in front of you, and we provided a bunch of information regarding the trip to Nationals. So it's, it's one full trip, the competition for Nationals runs that week of the 19th to the 23rd, but our officers, we have four officers who'd like to go. They will leave the Thursday before on the 15th and wouldn't return until the Sunday, the, excuse me, Saturday, the 24th, and then all the competitors would leave Sunday, the 18th, and return Saturday, the 24th. But the purpose, of course, is to go and compete at Nationals. And so our officers would go and they help carry out much of it and plan much of it. So that's why they go, and they're under the responsibility of the Skills USA folks, whereas the eight students would be going with our number of staff, would be going to, to compete, and we'd be there to support them.
So something that I want to mention, we've talked, the HCTC staff, Mr. Tracy and I, in light of some of the fiscal challenges we're having. In the past, we have used local budget funds to help cover the teacher expenses, and they believe that they will be able to fundraise enough to cover the costs so that it doesn't impact our local budget. There may be some local expenses that come out of the local budget to help the staff if they don't reach that goal, but the majority of this trip will be covered by fundraising, so that you're aware of that. And I absolutely loved some of the fundraising ideas that might have involved the director, a lock-in, a camp-out.
Camp-out, lock-in.
I was like, okay.
We have a weekend, though, there's a weekend, like the 19th, the 20th, and 21st of May, where we'll have a, hopefully, a cornhole tournament on the 20th. We'll have our 5K on the 21st, and I'll be camping out on one of the back buildings from Friday through Sunday.
Oh, wow. You are a trooper.
Absolutely.
On, on one of the buildings?
Yep.
Like on top of it?
Kind of like darlings, don't they do that? The car, yeah.
Just, just for sharing with the public, how many, you may have said this, and I may have. How many students are going to, total going to Skills USA?
So we have eight. Excuse me.
He's spent so sick.
He's terrified of this roof campout, he can't breathe.
I've got mugs to prepare, and I'm already, no, no, it's good. We have eight students that are going to compete, but we also have four that are going to, they're involved in the officer piece, so there'll be 12 total students that are going.
And how many teachers?
I think there's five of us that are going to support the students.
Seventeen total individuals. And it's in Atlanta.
Atlanta, Georgia, the sheriff.
When, did they go to Nationals last year in person?
Yes, a smaller number. But no, this is going to be full-fledged Atlanta, Georgia for the week, national competition.
An amazing experience.
I can't wait for you to see it. It's unreal what these kids do. And to have all the states march in like you see an Olympic-style thing and represent their state, it's pretty amazing.
I'm really excited.
I hope you put them in short, because it's going to be 100 degrees.
Oh, it's hot.
Well, I'm sure, we'll all, everyone in the community will be looking forward to the fundraising events that you'll be doing, and I'm sure there's going to be more than what you just mentioned.
We've had some amazing support so far with our 5K effort. It's been, the, the community support has been just unreal, so.
This is an amazing experience for everybody, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the overnight trip as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you. Item four, First Read of Policies.
So tonight before you, we have the first read of five policies. AC, Non-Discrimination, Equal Opportunity, and Affirmative Action. ACAa, Harassment and Sexual Harassment of Students. ACAa-R, which is your procedures. ACAb, Harassment and Sexual Harassment of School Employees. And ACAb-R, Employee Discrimination, Harassment, and Title IX Sexual Complaint Procedures. These are before you this evening as a first read because of a change in the Main Human Rights Act. This actually went into effect August of 2022. That specifies that discrimination in employment and education cannot happen in terms of race with hair texture and hairstyles as it pertains to race. So all of the three, all five of these policies have new language in them. The policies themselves are the same, but there is added language that says discrimination against and harassment of students because of race, et cetera. But for purposes of these policies, race includes traits associated with race, including hair texture, Afro hairstyles, protective hairstyles, including braids, twists, and logs. So this is adjusted language to be in line with the Main Human Rights Act.
Thank you.
And when were these policies last updated?
These were amended in August of 2020. And then, like I said, the Main Human Rights Act was August of 2022 it went to effect. However, we are being told that there may be additional Title IX changes forthcoming over the next year. And so it's a high possibility that when that happens, we'll have to bring these forward again. But for now, we need to be in compliance with the new Main Human Rights Act.
And even if there hadn't been the new act, we still would have had to update this policy by this August, because that would have marked the third, because every three years, policies have to be
Yes.
reviewed and voted on again, so.
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I move to acknowledge and accept the first read of the policies presented.
I like that.
I second that.
Great. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great, thank you. Item five, Second Read and Approval of Policies.
So last month, I brought before you with the Policy Committee two policies. CHD, Administration in the Absence of Policy. The only change in that was the deletion of a cross-reference policy that was listed that we didn't have. And it's also not been reviewed since 2018. And then also, Policy JL, Student Wellness, Nutrition, and Food Sales on School Properties before you for second read. When we had our school nutrition review, one of the recommendations that we received was the addition of language that spelled out the involvement of specific people in our wellness team as a district. So the only change that has been to this policy is that, and there's been no further feedback since the first read. This policy also was last reviewed in 2018.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the second read and adopt the following amended policies, including JL and CHD.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item six, Consideration of Full-Time Administrator Contracts.
So this evening, you should have received via email the list of administrators that we would like to roll forward for one year per main statute. They are all listed out for you, and we would ask that their contracts be rolled forward for one additional year.
Thank you.
I move to approve full-time administrator contracts in accord with the terms and conditions of employment as presented and recommended by the superintendent.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
I think those administrators are showing up every day.
Yes, no kidding. Item seven, and Consideration of the FY '24 Budget.
So I would like to call up, they're super excited about it. This is Carolyn Heller, our Finance Director, and Amy Atherton, our Accounting Manager. I've asked them to be here tonight so that as I go through some different parts of the budget and the budget development, if they have things they want to chime in on and add, they are more than welcome to. Or if you have specific questions that I maybe can't answer, they're my go-tos. So I want to start by saying that tonight's presentation is an accurate snapshot of where we are as of right now. It is not where we will be when we vote on this in a couple of weeks and where council will vote on either in a couple of weeks. Tonight's presentation is not meant to scare people, it's not meant to alarm people, but I think it's really important that we're very honest and transparent about where we were at as a district fiscally, what our needs are, and where we need to move to move forward. So since I've come on in December, I think I've been pretty, hopefully, transparent about some of my goals. And I think that the budget process and the budget presented to you tonight is reflective of that. First, reestablishing a culture of trust and transparency so that people know what the school department is doing, why we're doing it, where we stand. And to have trust and transparency between all stakeholder, not just us, but the council, taxpayers, and our staff and students. I think we've also tried really hard to increase community collaboration so people feel not just welcome in our schools, but heard as well. And finally, that we've wanted to really work on rebuilding educational excellence. You know, COVID was really hard on everyone, and really trying to get back to educational excellence for all. So those three goals are really, in my opinion, spoken to in this budget. So to kind of go back and talk about how this budget process started and some of the things that have been challenges for us along the way. You know, everyone talks about increases in fixed costs, your heating, your food, your fuel, all of those things. We have certainly had those challenges this year and will moving forward. We've had our challenges this year. Additional expenditures in the superintendent's line, legal lines, and then the temporary boiler as well. This year, unlike prior years, we have filled our positions. So over the last several years, we always had several unfilled positions. This year, we've been very fortunate to find employees to fill our positions. Some of the things that we had identified as a leadership team were important to us to getting our district moving forward again. We talked a lot about wanting to reestablish a quality pre-K program and talked about the addition of two pre-K teachers. We had previously had pre-K, and this year Down East Collaboration was not able to staff the room. So we lost that program, which is a loss of subsidy for us from the state. We get state subsidy for having a pre-K program, and we get those students to count on our subsidy count. We had also felt the expansion of gifted and talented, and having someone spearheading that at the high school, as well as helping Mrs. Stackpole at the K-8 school was essential. We talked about having a K-8 instructional coach. Currently, our instructional coach services all three schools. That's a lot of staff for one person to work with our teachers on day-to-day practices. We also talked about restructuring leadership team. We talked about adding the addition of an assistant superintendent and having that person also work side-by-side with our curriculum coordinator. We discussed restructuring facilities and transportation and how we may consolidate expenses and have facilities and transportation become one department. This budget also looks to add six new ed techs for special education coverage. We talked about a resource room teacher, grade six. Currently, our grade-six special education classroom is a combination of resource room and behavior, where out of compliance, those need to be separated. We also discussed the fact that our seventh-grade class is our largest class at the K-8 school, and our grade-eight configuration currently is only four teachers. Every other grade level at our K-8 school has five, and with the largest class moving from seventh to eighth grade, the need for an additional eighth-grade teacher. We talked about the need for two new custodial and maintenance positions, something that we've really worked hard on. I believe Frank has dedicated himself to bringing pride back to how our schools look. That includes our fields and all of our facilities. And right now, Central Office and our adult education offices are not covered. So we're kind of doing those things ourselves. And so one of the positions was to provide adult education with custodial coverage, Central Office with custodial coverage, and then be a floater to help at all the other sites. And then a second maintenance floater position that would also help with the fields. We also talked about an additional van driver to help offset some of the double runs that we do for special education students. And finally, we've been working all year on new negotiated agreements. We did the administrative assistance this year, the specialist unit, and are finalizing our teacher negotiated agreement. So those were all some of the challenges and things that we felt were important for us to talk about moving forward. When we started the budget, as of last Friday, our budget was up 12.78% and came in at $28,231,66. As of tonight, that budget has been reduced to a 6.97% increase, and that 6.97% increase is budget to budget. So that is our expenses and our budgeted from last year to our budget this year. Staff between Friday and today have cut an additional $1.455 million from our budget. Staff worked tirelessly to look at supplies, textbooks, and equipment that would not have a direct impact to students, but knew the financial difficulties we were having and looked to make those cuts. Back in 2023 January, this past January, we made the decision, which was not an easy one, to freeze the budget. Part of our rationale for freezing the budget was, as I've mentioned, we had a lot of emergencies come up this year. And one of the things that I realized, being new, was that we did not have reserve accounts. So state recommendation, correct me if I'm wrong, ladies, is when you end your fiscal year for schools, you want to take 3% to 5% of that surplus money that you didn't spend that budgeted year and have that be your undesignated fund balance. That is tried and true what you should have so that when emergencies arise, you can use that and it doesn't burden your local budget the following year. You also should use some of the surplus to create reserve accounts. Things like capital improvement, things like special education emergency, fuel reserves. There are a lot of different reserve accounts that you can create that school departments have so that when big-ticket items like a boiler go out, you can use those reserve accounts to offset that and not, again, provide an additional increase to taxpayers. We froze the budget in January 2023 because of the unanticipated expenses we had this year. We have had to use our local budget this year to pay for those in the absence of having reserve accounts. I also would like to say that because of COVID, okay, the good, bad, and ugly of COVID, one of the things that happened was during COVID, kids weren't in school full-time. Staff was not attending professional development, which meant they weren't traveling. We had a lot of unfilled positions. And so during those years, our surplus was a little bit higher than normal. Unfortunately for us today, over the last several years, the decision was made to use the surplus to apply towards the next year's operating expenses. So over the last several years, we've probably applied close to $6 million of our undesignated fund balance towards the budget the following year. And that means we have no savings this year to help us with our budget. So what we will be left with to help us offset the budget this year is what we have remaining for surplus from this specific year. So what you see before you is the grim picture of where this puts us. So when you look at state subsidy, the way state subsidy works is the state allocates, using a very complicated formula, the amount of money the state is going to give us towards our budget. The local contribution is what the state says we have to raise in local costs or local taxpayer money to receive that state subsidy money. Everyone was very excited because everyone heard, oh, we got all kinds of new money. Well, we did, but it didn't make a dent in where we are at. So if you look at the state subsidy allocation, which is about 3/4 of the way down under revenues, our state subsidy allocation did go up, it's gone up $706,000, which is 12.78% over next year. And the mil rate expectation is 1.15% up, which is great. The problem is the additional local line underneath, okay? So when we take our budgeted expenses from the top and we take our revenues, what is in that additional local line, you will see in 2022, 2023, was over $3 million. What is highlighted in gray is $5.4 million. That is in addition to what the locals would have to contribute. The reason why you see a $2.389 million increase is because of the line underneath. We do not have $2 million to apply to our budget, which is what has been done the last two years. So because we don't have that money to apply, the additional local expense is skyrocketed. So currently, if you go to the bottom, you'll see the total local appropriation is an increase of $2.3 million. And if we kept it as it is right now, that's a 20.93% increase to local taxpayers. What I will say, though, that I want their help if I don't say it correctly. If we were to bring this 20.5% down to like 8%, let's say, we would have to cut another $1.1 million from our budget, which would put us at a $200,000 increase from last year's budget to this year's budget, which does not even begin to include fixed costs of fuel, food, staff increases, and pay. So I want people to understand that. We've cut $1.4 million already, and we still are only at 20.5%. And so if we were to cut another $1.1, $1.2, $3 million, we're going to be past below almost where we were last year in our budget request. We cannot sustain that long-term. And I don't say that to scare people, but we have cut supplies, PD, we've done what we can do for that work. Could there be a little more trimming? Probably, absolutely. But for us to offset this budget, we're going to be looking at significant personnel changes and cuts, which is going to have a direct loss to our kids. And I'm going to need some guidance from you, guidance from city council, on where we're going to go with this. Because when I look at this, a 6.89% increase from budget to budget is actually really good in talking to other superintendents. Like, most are 8 to 12 up from last year's budget. But when you go down and you look at the local appropriation, our taxpayers can't do that either. So we've got to find a middle ground somewhere. But this is a depiction of where we are currently. And putting $500,000 towards the budget for next year is a guess right now. That's our best guess. If we can apply more, of course we will, but we don't want to promise that at all because we don't know. There's been a lot that has jumped up on us this year that we hadn't planned for, things that weren't budgeted for last spring, our math curriculum. There's increases in our budget that really have not helped the situation. And so trying to find ways to not cut programming and staffing for kids, to be fiscally responsible to taxpayers, but really try to find a way to make this work. Did I miss? Um, did I miss?
See, you trained me so well. You trained me so well.
Well, and I, and I think, Amy, anyone who watched the budget workshop last, last week or two, whatever, whatever, whatever it was, um, saw all of those things. There's areas that to be in compliance, we have to increase. So not only would we be talking about cuts from our current level, but we would also be talking about additional cuts because in order to be in compliance, we have to add. So there would be even more that we would potentially have to take away.
And what I want to add is that with this new budget, with these cuts, a lot of the new things that I said leadership team really felt passionately about having to help us move forward, we've taken out. And we've taken out a lot of the things that I talked about that we needed. The pre-K program is cut, the expansion of gifted and talented, cut. K to eight instructional coach, cut. Looking at assistant superintendent and a curriculum coordinator, we really believe we need both positions. We couldn't sustain that. So the curriculum coordinator position has been cut. Um, director of facilities and maintenance has now been combined. We will not have a transportation director moving forward. Frank will take on the role of director of facilities and transportation. I mean, we have tried to make cuts so that we're not going to people and saying you're losing jobs. I mean, we've had to do that in a couple of circumstances. Probably will have to do that some more. It's not been a fun week for myself or any of leadership team. Um, but really trying to be thoughtful about what, what we value as a community for the education of our kids and what things do we want to hold on to and what things are going to be let go. But I think it's really important for people to understand that when we start cutting that six point eight nine percent, we're gonna, it's gonna hurt. It, it's gonna be, that six point eight nine percent is one hundred percent. Your increase, your staff raises through teacher negotiations, your specialist raises, and it is your increase in fixed costs in fuel and electricity and food that costs more money than it did a year ago. That stuff is fixed and cuts now are gonna go way beyond that to get that twenty percent down.
Amy, I think it's also important to point out, as we were talking about in facilities, not facilities, in finances um earlier today, is that our budgets have been so lean the past few years. I mean, last year, our increase was less than two percent. I mean, I think it's just, it's catching up with us, and here we are.
So I, that's a good point, and I'm glad you pointed that out. Um, Amy Atherton worked on this today. And I, I do wanna to share this with you. So when we look at our general fund budget, just our budget, um, we, starting back in two thousand sixteen, there was a one point nine percent increase to our budget from the year prior. Two thousand seventeen, two point nine one percent from the year prior. Two thousand eighteen, one point seven three percent. Two thousand nineteen, three point five seven percent. Two thousand twenty, five point six eight. Two thousand twenty-one, one point seven. Two thousand twenty-two, three point five nine. Last year, we were six point two two percent over, and this year we're at six point nine seven. When you look at the local allocation, though, and this is what's interesting, is in two thousand sixteen, we were eight point six five percent where we were the year prior in local allocation. Two thousand seventeen, it was point four three. In two thousand eighteen, it was point four one. In two thousand nineteen, it was two point one seven. In two thousand twenty, two point nine one. Two thousand twenty-one, it was a decrease of point nine percent. Two thousand twenty-two, negative one point nine seven percent. Two thousand twenty-three, point nine three percent. And this year, we're at twenty point nine three. I mean, this is the total fiscal cliff that Mr. Higgins and Mrs. Kane talked about. We just kept applying our fund balances to the budgets to help offset things to ease the burden on taxpayers. And boom, we don't have anything to apply this year, and here we are.
Right, and I think it's also really important to keep in mind, too, the things that, the positions that have been not filled and how important that is for the education of our children and the future of our city for those positions to be filled, right? Like, like previous years them not being filled, they may have helped us financially, but they certainly didn't help us in the long run. And the fact that, I think it's important to mention that those small, small increases, while fantastic, there's so many pieces that we haven't been able to accommodate, like the roof at the high school, the, the, the different pieces. And I also go back to even just this year, um, the difference in what we had budgeted for plowing and snow removal and how much more we had to spend on that. And that is not an, that's not like, like a boiler that you don't expect that a cost is gonna happen, right? But this is something that you did budget for, but the cost changed so drastically, and we still went with the lowest quote. But we still, I think it was like thirty thousand dollars more than what we had budgeted because it was that much more over previous years. And there's absolutely nothing other than having reserves that you can do to plan for that. Like, there's no, you can't, you can't anticipate that from one year to the next, your plowing cost is gonna increase that drastically.
And that's why you have reserves. And I think it's important to point out that our facilities plan, the year one of our facilities plan, was an excess of five million dollars of projects. And those projects can't keep getting put off.
No, because then they cost ten million.
So one of the things that we're looking at in collaboration with the city is doing an engineering study so that we can get a really thoughtful outside person who's not trying to sell us their product, um, to give us a timeline of what we need to tackle first and how we need to tackle it. While we're doing that study, create our reserve accounts. Even if it's small to start, create reserve accounts from the surplus of this year's budget so that moving forward, when emergencies happen, it doesn't come at a cost to the taxpayers. We can instead use those accounts to draw off of. Um, but really, I, I do appreciate the thought that and the process that we've used, having the board, city council, myself, and the city manager work on those things together. And we're really behind the scenes trying to talk about different ways of funding different projects so that we can move forward with our school system and not have these big-ticket facilities items be in this budget. Those facilities items are out of this budget for the most part. Um, there are some smaller things, lockdown buttons, security shades that we need for safety and security. But a lot of our big-ticket items have been pulled out and we're looking at trying to finance in different ways.
And unfortunately, unfortunately, I think part of the reason that that list of big-ticket items that we need is so long is because we have pushed them back for so long that now we're at a point where we need this many millions of dollars of stuff done in one year because it's, we, we are, we are at the point where we don't have a choice.
Well, and I think in fairness to everyone, I think these big-ticket items, they're easier to cut. You know, when you present a budget and you're told you need to get to two percent or three percent, to not cut your staff, you're gonna cut those things.
We couldn't cut our staff. We couldn't cut our staff when we weren't even, we weren't even hiring for all the positions that we needed. Like, we, we had, when you have positions go unfilled, there's, there's nowhere else to, to cut. And we, we faced some challenges with special ed being so, so short-staffed. We're lucky we didn't get sued. People don't understand, there are mandates for this. There are standards we have to meet. Those positions have to be there, or we gamble a lawsuit that would cost us way more than this. And, and this budget is very much like the city council, where the bill has come due. During COVID, both the school department and the city aggressively cut the budgets to try to make sure the burden wasn't passed on to the taxpayers, but it was stated in every meeting there and here. At some point, this is gonna catch up to us. At some point, not only are we gonna have to pay for what we didn't do, but we're gonna have to pay for the repairs for what happened when we do it, didn't do it. And so, you know, this is my fourth year on facilities, and we should be in year four or five of the roof repair at the high school. We're maybe, I don't even know if we're into two.
Two would be next year.
Right. And the problem is, we've now had the roof come down in certain places in our classrooms because we were told, take your budget, go back, cut more, cut more, cut more. That got cut. A repair that we could have done for about half of what we are now gonna pay because of the increase in costs, not only is, are we gonna pay double for that repair, we have to repair everything under it that got damaged because we had to cut the budget to put that off. There is no more room. The, literally, the bill has come due. I see people yelling online about the roads, the roads, the roads. That, city council made that super clear, like to, to make the budget, we're gonna cut the road repair. Yes, it created potholes. If you were paying attention, you knew that was gonna happen. Now the bill's come due, the city has to repair this stuff. This is what we have to do. We have to, we have to come back and make ends meet where we now have inflation that's astronomical because we used our, our, we used our money for the rainy day and it's gone. And this is, this is just what it costs to do the most basic things.
So my next, I just have one more question. So right now, we're seeing that grand total appropriation of twenty point five two percent. And that's because of these previous years. So this is likely an exception, right? We're not likely, like for taxpayers who are wondering, oh, my gosh, so is this gonna be the norm moving forward? Are we gonna see a twenty percent increase every year? Is this like what we should be anticipating? Or is this like, here is an unusual thing because unusual things happened?
So, yes, it's definitely unusual, okay? I think it's gonna take us two to three years to get out of this hole.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and that's being a hundred percent transparent and not sugarcoating it. Do I think we can go to the public for two to three years and ask for twenty percent? No, I don't. But I think people need to understand that it's gonna take us two to three years to build these reserves up and get our undesigned fund balance to that three to five percent, which it is not right now. Um, so that we're fiscally in a more financially stable place.
And, and you know, it's kind of, it's kind of disa- it's disappointing because that budget, when, about, when you did that presentation, like, a couple of weeks ago, that budget was beautiful. And there were so many things that were gonna do so many good things for our students.
We were so excited.
And it's so sad to think that those things are likely going to have to wait longer than we want them to. And, but you know, it's also encouraging that our educators and our administrators and our, you know, across all, all of our schools in our school department have some really incredible ideas that as we move forward, as we, you know, come to the top of this, that we're gonna have some really incredible things that are gonna make huge impacts in our schools. And I'm sad. I mean, I'm, I mean, I pay taxes in this city, and I'm like, ooh, that's a lot. But at the same time, I'm like, oh, my gosh, that's so sad because that was so great.
So it, it does sound like a lot, but I think that we need to remember that the overall budget increase is only six point nine seven percent. When we talk about the twenty point five two percent, that's only a difference of two million, three hundred and sixty-three dollars out of a twenty-six million dollar budget. So it's just the local allocation. So it's a smaller number. So the percentage just sounds a lot bigger, but it's not as-
It's doable.
Yeah.
It is doable. And it just- If we want these buildings to, to be usable for fifty and sixty years, we have to do this. We will not get forty years out of the high school if we don't address some of these problems right now. The high school will not let, last as long as HHTC has, nor will our, our, even our newer building, our, you know, middle school and elementary school already has cost repairs so big. People don't have any idea how close we came to not being able to open those doors during the winter because of that boiler. Like, that's how close we were to having to, you guys thought all COVID was inconvenient? Oh, it was, but you almost got round two because we almost could not open our doors because of that boiler. That's how dire the situation is. And these buildings are owned by the city. It is an investment for the city to keep these bu- buildings up. We don't want to have to put, you know, so how many millions of dollars it took to, to repair the Moore Center because that went, you know, unrepaired for so long? I mean, it was, it was a massive bill. Yeah, and we're not gonna get the use if we don't do it.
Mrs. Bowles, is there anything else you wanted to discuss about the budget?
I think, um, first and foremost, I, I want to thank the administrators and staff. This has been painful. Um, cutting, cutting over a million dollars um, took a lot of thought and a lot of work on their part. It's caused a lot of stress and angst on our staff, our teachers, and our, um, hourly employees are stressed because they understand that now what's left is positions, and that's causing a lot of angst, which I think is really unfortunate because they've worked exceptionally hard this year. Um, and over the last several years with COVID. So I think that's really unfortunate, but I do want to say thank you to all of them um, for their commitment and their understanding um, in cutting the budget. Um, they all went through activities on Friday to help us get to the six point, a little over six percent. Um, so I want to thank them. I want to thank Carolyn and Amy for their work and their analysis on all of this. And like I said, they've trained me well because I probably couldn't have done this a few hours ago, but but I, I want to thank them as well, um, for their work and putting all of this together. And, you know, the timeline is we go to city council Thursday night. Um, we may probably will, are talking about making a, a few more additional cuts before Thursday night. Um, and then I was very clear with city council at finance committee that Thursday night would not be my final presentation. We went back and forth about whether or not I should present Thursday night if we weren't ready. But everyone felt at the table that it was important I show this and where we were Thursday night so that they could be included in the process. And then the plan will be, um, they are having a special meeting on the Tuesday after vacation, which is actually when we're scheduled to have our board workshop. Um, so our Tuesday, April twenty-fifth school board workshop will be moved to Monday night, April twenty-fourth.
Maybe we should keep it and just all attend that special.
No, no, I'm not doing that. You can have the board meeting yourself. I'm going to city council. Um, on Monday, the twenty-fourth, is when I'll be asking you to vote on the budget. And then I'll go to city council Tuesday night, the twenty-fifth. And that gives us our required statutory timeline to have the referendum in June. Because if we don't meet that referendum, we would start, um, in July without our budget. So what would happen is everything would hold firm into July from this current year.
So what happens? If we go to the city council on the twenty-fifth and they don't approve what we bring to them?
Um, we have contingencies that we're gonna talk about. We've kind of put plans in place for additional meetings if we need to, um, because it's really essential that the city have their, yeah.
Because if not, then it costs even more money.
Then it costs more money. So we really are gonna look Thursday night for city council's input. Um, they've emailed and requested some data that I'll be providing to them. Um, I think it's gonna be really important Thursday night for a board that can attend and city councillors to really have an open dialogue about-
This Thursday?
Yes, um, about their expectations around the budget um, and the work that we have to do. And then we'll take April vacation. That's what I'll be doing, um, over April break, yeah.
Is that meeting six or six-thirty?
It's five.
Oh, gosh, five?
Mm-hmm. It's a five o'clock special meeting. That's what I was told. So Casey, I guess you and I better check on that.
Did the people who don't work make that time?
You want me to check my email?
A- Amy, to add to what you said, I think also the fact that you, as a brand-new superintendent, who wasn't even really actually hired as superintendent, you were acting as assistant superintendent and as interim superintendent for an extended period of time, the fact that you've been able to, you know, make your best efforts to comply with this timetable while also implementing a much more collaborative budgeting process, that speaks volumes of the team that you have working with you and the administrators and everyone that you've been working with, and you, because like, really, you stepped into, you stepped onto the cliff and then you had to back up from it, you know, you had to like- You stepped onto the cliff, and then you had to back up from it, you know, you had to like.
People were behind you going boom.
Right, so, so really, I think, you know, I, I hear you praising um everyone else. But I want to praise you as well, because this is really. And, and honestly, as someone who's been on the board, this is, this is my third budget season.
Yep.
Um, this is the most involved and the most um detailed. That I have felt like, I feel like I have a good handle on why this looks this way. It's, it's really been an incredible process.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback.
Kelly, can I?
Yes.
Say something?
And I'm gonna look at the time.
I wanted to share my perspective as someone who's been on this board since two thousand fourteen. Which is um longer than anyone currently serving on the council. So I've seen, I've been present and participating in budget, developing budgets um since then. Uh, the first budget we developed was to. For our, when we were gonna be withdrawing from the RSU um. In two thousand fourteen, and became our own elder school department as, as of July first that year. So this is the tenth budget I'm working on, and. What I've seen over those years is that, um, except for that very first year when we had some one-time costs um associated with. The um withdrawal itself, that we had costs that we had to pick up. And we, we um borrowed money for some of those costs that we paid on, we paid over five years. But that year, the, the, I can't remember the exact numbers, but the um increase to local appropriation was in. It was, I think, close to nine percent or something like that, or eight percent. But since then, we've managed to keep it on average below two percent. And, you know, some years it was below, it was, we had a negative increase, others it was around one percent or less. We were fortunate in those years that um inflation was running at around two percent. Or less, which helped us. We were giving uh raises to our staff that were averaging three percent a year. That's higher than the rate of inflation, but we were trying to bring our, all our staff, teachers as well as everyone else up a little bit. Uh, we were always mindful and, and we were. Um, I think we were working with some councils that made us feel especially mindful that we had to keep the budget down. And we were fortunate to do it, the, to be able to do it with that low inflation rate that we had. Inflation has changed in the last year or two. I don't know where it's going. Anyone who says they do, they don't know what they're talking about. No, because we don't know, we don't know.
Right.
There are signs, though, that it's leveling off and subsiding. Some of the things that are driving the spike in inflation recently, some of the factors have changed. But this is an exceptional time for us. And if you reflect back on these past nine years and how we've done. And what the impact has been on the local taxpayers. I just, I would ask people to reflect on that and think, well, maybe this is a year when we can. Go a little bit above and beyond what we've done in the past in order to keep. In order to keep serving our students with what, with all this um resources and services and programs that they, that they need. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Paul. All right, you all sat?
Any other questions from the board?
Okay.
You guys didn't have to speak at all.
You guys did great. All right, that brings us to Jay, calendar and announcements.
So.
Oh, go ahead.
So uh, on the calendar and announcements, um, the finance committee meeting, April eighteenth, is going to be moved. Um, we're not sure, to be determined. The school board workshop listed April twenty-fifth needs to be changed to April twenty-fourth. In light of our attendance at the city council meeting. And then the rest is.
And the city council meeting is what time?
The city council meeting on the twenty-fifth, my understanding is at six. The email I have for Thursday night's presentation of the school budget says five, but I will verify that. But my calendar invite from Tony says five. Yeah, I'll, I'll come show you after. On the city website?
Just keep us posted.
If everything else has been at six, my guess is then maybe it's at six. Yeah, okay.
All right, great. Then we have personnel on May first, policy committee, May first, curriculum committee, May second. Facilities and transportation, May eighth. And our next regular school board meeting will be Tuesday, May ninth. And that brings us to item K, adjournment.
Having no further business, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
On the second?
Okay, we're good. Although, any discussion, all those intrigue her?